This is a plug in between two buildings. And I remember years ago, when we were building this building, one of Ed Goodstein's concerns was his view through here. And lights and, you know, it's been sitting in the back of my head all these years. And we had the opportunity, and as Jeff said, I thought, this is a win-win. We get to put a plug in here, it'll complete this noise barrier that we've been building over time. And it would be a win-win for everybody. We would plug that, we look to the center of campus. We have, in the master plan document for, oh, I think we've had it in there since the inception of the master plan, and every update since then, we list our design criteria in terms of sight, sound, light. My conversation, Jeff's conversation with Ed and Fran is that they're happy with how we are handling that. They don't have light intrusion, they don't have sound intrusion. And as I said to them, you know, we politely turn our backs on you, and we focus inward into the center of campus. All of our lobbies focus toward the squad or toward the center. And this is just a continuation of that design principle. So we think that it appears to, I don't know, I mean, how many years can we develop that project? Six or seven years, something like that? It's just, it informed our decision, our design intent on this building. Less of an issue here, because we're pretty much in the middle of campus. So, that's the building, that's the project.
Go ahead and talk about the drilling.
Oh, yes, yeah. In the meeting with Ed and Fran, they, we were reminded of, and something that we're well aware of, when we built the athletic center, it involves a pretty good-sized dig because it's below grade, we didn't have the space to lay back, so we put in shoring. And the way we did that was, it was along this line, pretty much, and around here. We vibration-drilled the shoring members. That's done because it's fast, it's less expensive, and they just go right in until you hit, I think it was right around in here. There are about six of those things that just would not go in. For some reason, we had an extremely compacted soil, I think it was heavy clay content. It actually broke the machine. So we had a couple of columns that were pretty brutal to get in there, and that was, it was not fun. Interestingly enough, you'll get past the six, and you get to the seventh one, and it just went, and it just, they just went in, just the way they're supposed to. We did the basement for the Creative Arts and Design Center in the same method, nobody noticed. We just didn't have that heavily compacted soil we're trying to drive these things through. Well, for this project, I decided that we're not going to do that anymore. We're going to drill. We're going to drill, drop the piers in, you do a grout around them, and they're there. And then at the end of the project, you go a little bit for low grade, you cut them off, and you abandon them in place. When you vibration-drive these things, you can pull them out, so you don't even rent the steel. You pull them out and take them away. When I drill, we buy them, and they'll put them in the ground. We think that it is money well spent to not replicate like vibrations on them we had before. It's an annoyance, but it's a significant annoyance. So we're just going to absolutely dodge that one, and just go with the drilled piers, and abandon them in place. It's not a very big dig, so it's not a huge financial impact. It's doable for us, it's important for us. And I honestly think that, and the contractor tells me that he can drill and place all those things in a day. So I've been telling everybody, two days, but he said in a day. I think it's a good solution to that problem, and it's a small enough dig that I can, I don't have to go on my hands and knees as a CFO to try to get money to do that. And I think we can satisfy Ed and Fran, and I think it'll be fine.
What about the other building?
Oh, that's, it's a totally different thing. It sits on an existing wall.
So there won't be anything in place?
Yeah, there's no driven house for that. Actually, there are, but they're already there. We're just connecting to them.
David, I have a question.
Sure.
We haven't talked about the timeline yet. What do you, when do you think, assuming that there's some action taken this evening that would be beneficial to you guys, when do you think you start, and what's the timeline to finish up this operation?
We have two different schedules. What we call the Ted's Project, because it would be the head's office on Stent Hall, would be the first one. And if we get a positive outcome tonight, then the drawings go in for plan check. We expect probably, we've estimated four weeks of plan check. And we could pull a permit theoretically end of October, first of November, and we would start construction at that point. So that's November of 2014. And we anticipate that construction would be finished by mid-March of 2015, and move-in, TCO would be in the mid-March kind of window. That, now, the TBC project, the addition to the Creative Arts and Design Center, here again, now, we're bringing these projects at the same time, because we were requested to bring them at the same time, rather than one now and one in a couple of months. So we don't anticipate getting the plans into plan check until the first of January, first-ish, 2015. And here again, with a four-week plan check cycle and permit, we're looking at starting construction about the second week in February of 2015, and with completion at the end of October 2015, and move-in in the beginning of November 2015. We may actually slip that pending, you know, just the business cycles, and as I said, technology is a long move-in, so we would be moving them in slowly. So I think practically speaking, with technology, we would like to be finished with the move by the winter break, the Christmas holiday break in 2015. William?
Next question. I assume the Technology Center means where the computers and servers and your IT guys are located?
That's correct.
The Data Center?
That's the data.
Okay. The second question is, you're adding on 7,500 square feet to a 40,000 square foot building, 18%. That's not a lot, and I'm kind of puzzled as to why would you, you know, when that building was built a couple of years ago, that just wasn't included as part of the building itself?
We really hadn't decided.
You'd be a three-and-a-half percent interest on the mortgage, come on. It's basically a cash add-on.
You haven't raised any money lately, have you? You know, it was, it was, I guess that's a legitimate question. Now, one thing we did do when we built it was, in the basement of the Creative Arts and Design Center, the basement is largely used for storage, and of course, machine room and things like that. Our server room is in the basement. There is a room down there that was originally designed as the future server room for the campus network node kind of thing. So it has been technology's intention to, as they, as they move toward a distributed system, to make that their central node where the servers, I'm going to pretend I understand this. They're telling me we don't have that many servers on campus anymore, everything is off-site storage. So the real estate for one of those things is getting a little bit smaller. But right about here in the basement is a teledate room that has this much tele and a whole bunch of room for data, and that will be their who's server.
You didn't have any money, is that the answer?
Didn't occur to us.
Did it occur to you? It's a timing issue.
Yeah, no, I think this is-
They were closed off, they were done, all that. I was just puzzled as to why you didn't do it then.
I guess the bottom line is, it really didn't occur to us, that we hadn't sort of gotten there unthinking. We thought that we would be able to put the business office up on the third floor of Stent Hall. We thought there was a possibility there.
Short people.
That's really the answer.
David, when did you know the oak tree was dying? I didn't-
Oh, that, yeah, that's another piece too, is that there was a very large oak tree there. But it has since collapsed. So we looked at that site, kind of like, well, you know, what would fit in there? What could we do to plug that hole visually and sound? And, you know, from my perspective, from working with the campus planners, our campus planner, and working with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, it was just sort of that aha moment when you go, oh, that would really work there. And it has some logic in its connectivity to the server room, that will work.
But the answer is, you didn't have any money, that's all I'm getting at.
No, it didn't-
Do you think of that right?
I think, I think it's both of those things. I think it's both of those things.
All right, now we have a carb, I'll call him aside.
I have one more question for you. When you originally built that building, you didn't consider putting the 7,200 square feet in, and it's probably, did you size the air conditioning and heating to handle this extra load of people and machinery?
No.
So what are you going to do now?
Put in an air conditioner, additional air conditioning.
Do you have to add to the air conditioning?
Has that a noise problem for your neighbors?
And what does that do? Is that on the roof, or where is it?
No, I don't put it on the roof.
Where is it?
It's right here. It's below grade, it's in the basement, we have the machinery. You may remember that we have a condenser roof that we built a couple of years ago. So we have this utility now, the SENS, not chill board, it's a condenser roof. We built that here, that's where all cooling towers are, and there is a utility that runs, pipes underground that run all the way around and go to here, and they will eventually go to the Performing Arts Center. That utility is in this building. We're adding on to, or reutilizing that utility. And in the basement, right underneath this atrium space, we've got a machine room that will have the air conditioning unit in there, and air intakes right outside here. It'll be totally concealed to the neighbors, there's no visual, there's no sound, nothing.
David, there was talk about the dining hall, where would that be if you relocated it?
That's on the first floor of Stent Hall, right in here.
Okay. On the backside.
On the backside, yeah.
And then, when you're doing the construction, what would be your ingress and your egress as far as equipment and dirt and things like that?
We would come off of Alejandra, down the Service Road, and back through here. We can utilize this road here to come into a lay-down area back here for this project. And then when this project is done, the lay-down area goes to here.
And I'm just seeing this letter tonight from your neighbors, and something that jumped up at me, and I'd like you to respond to, if you can. It says, further the school conducts back-of-house functions on the other side of the fence from their home. This includes trash enclosures that are maintained in a permanently open position ostensibly in order to facilitate the ease of trash pickup. In addition to causing odors and unsightliness, they believe that this has led to an increase in rodents on and near their property, and the proposed offices in Technology Center will only exacerbate the existing, excuse me, trash problem. How would you respond? I don't know if you've seen this or not, but-
Well, the letter, the letter is a pretty accurate reflection of the conversation that we had with them. It lists a lot of the same kind of issues. We talked extensively about that trash enclosure.
Where is it now?
Here, right here. And the reason it's there, it's a CMU structure, three sides, with three dumpsters, big dumpsters in it, and it allows the collection trucks to come in, pick them up, back through, and just go straight out. From our neighbor's view, you really can't see any trash, I mean, it's all pointed this direction. They wanted me to put gates on it to keep that out. That's just a work. We pay a lot of attention to this thing. We're in and out of it every day, all day long, dumping trash and things like that. We have no evidence of rodent problem there, none. Now, you, I guess if you want to call a squirrel a rodent, you want somebody to get a squirrel in there.
Rats with fuzzy tails.
Rats with better outfits? Yeah, sure. We don't believe that we are generating, that we're creating a rodent problem at all. Ed and Fran do remember when we, and for both of us, it's been sitting here for a while, when we had Douglas Village here, and we tore down, Douglas Village was seven small, 800-square-foot residences that harken back to the days when it was a residential school. They sat right in here. When we demolished those houses for the athletic center, yeah, we had them run it, because they were in the vegetation, the basements and all that. That, in my experience, it was a very typical problem when you tear out residential structures, these things run looking for new homes. One of the new homes they found were some sheds inside the Ed and Fran's property. They took care of that, but I think that they remember that. They remember that, you know, that has happened. We have a little bit, over the years, we have had a little bit of rodent problem back here along this fence line, but we're pretty aggressive about the trapping, the outdoor bake stations, and getting the people in here. We don't want them in our stuff either. The problem with rats is they're an urban reality. I mean, it's just, they're here, and we're constantly trying to keep them at bay and try to be good neighbors so that we're not creating a problem. I just don't think the trash enclosure is a problem, other than, you know, you've got to put your trash can someplace. We've tried to be very considerate to the neighbors and turn the structure so it's not busy, so that they don't see the open dumpsters. You actually have to come along to our property to see the open dumpsters, I mean, the front face of it. And I talked to them, and we talked about putting like big iron gates kind of thing on the front of it, but the reality is, they would be open all the time, because my guys are in and out of it all the time, picking up trash on campus, they're taking it out there, the landscapers, my gardening crews are taking yard waste and putting it in the recycling bins. I think I would spend a lot of money on gates that would never get closed. And it wouldn't improve what Ed and Fran see from their house at all, because they don't see those gates.
Is my logic correct? You're not increasing staff?
We're consolidating staff.
So, and the net total of trash and garbage is not increased and possibly decreased, therefore, the food for rats is not increased and possibly decreased?
We're at steady state, I think, in that.
Thank you. Well, can I follow up on that one? You're talking sometime in the future about putting some dining facilities in the reverse side of Stent Hall. My question is much along these same lines. How do you service that facility? You have to bring material in, and you have to take waste out. It's right in the middle of campus, how do you get there?
That is one of the major design challenges of designing a dining facility that's in the middle of the campus. I'm going to dodge your question, not intentionally, well, maybe intentionally. We will bring you that solution when we bring you a design for the dining facility. We know that that's a problem. We've got to figure out how to get not only food in, but trash out. It is the same problem that almost every restaurant faces, when you're inside an enclosed area, and this is a very typical problem, and it's a real problem, that we have not solved yet. If that's part of the design-
And you're going to make the same situation on the cooking fumes as well, you're going to do something with that?
We are assuming, and I think rightfully, that the engineering will not get through engineering and permit unless we've done the appropriate things for any of those-
Just talking about it ahead of time, that's all.
Yeah, now, we're well aware that, a dining hall is very, I mean, not the dining hall as much, well, for the trash, yes, but not for cooking, it's the kitchen. It's a very complicated piece of business. And we're not exactly sure what we're going to be faced with, but we know that we're going to have to deal with the effluent from cooking.
Okay, thank you. My question. Any further questions for David?
Yeah. How did the conversation with the neighbors end? Have you satisfied their concerns?
Have I satisfied their concerns? I don't think I can satisfy their concerns, not all of them. The one that we have the most ability to satisfy and mitigate is what they see in terms of a wall or whatever. I mean, we are appropriately set back, we are in the right place. So what we've been concentrating on is how can we mitigate that view, filter that view? And that's, and what we talked to them about was a landscape solution. And as I recall the conversation, they said, well, Ed said, well, okay, I can see how that would work, but that was about it. What I've done is reached out to Ed and Fran and said, I've got a proposal from a landscape contractor, I want to talk to you about it. Let's get together and talk about what we're proposing and see if that is satisfactory to them. And so, and that was just today, I think, when I got the proposal back. So I think he's traveling, they're traveling, they're not available, so we're kind of, we're going to need to coordinate schedules, that's all.
Okay, on the drawings that you provided to us, we've got views from the southwest, and we don't have the view from, from the north side, the big side.
The, from the neighbor's side, then?
Yeah.
I can show it to you. It was not in the original submission. Let me, I have two, sorry, I think twenty thousand per person, so we can all, we can all take it, take through. There are two here. The first one is kind of without vegetation and all of that stuff. And the second one is drawing that a head architect drew for a meeting with Ed and Fran so that they could get a sense of where their fence line is, and you'll see that in the shadow, the green shadow. The, that's one of the two that you're looking at right now. So it's, this in combination with the other elevations will give you a sense of how we think this building integrates into the original building, the same materials and the same roof lines and same colors. These two oak trees are existing, and we intend to leave them there, even if I have to move them for construction and then put them back. Because I'm not real, I'm not real sure how successful we would be installing the shoring there, because it's not damaging the trees. So, but we want the trees there. That tree that I was talking about, there is an existing oak tree that actually had a choice of two of them on the site, would go on this point, the land right here. See that? Can you see that? Because you might be able to imagine from the other drawing with that fence shadow in there, the fence line comes along here and then goes this way. And this is where the oak tree was that died and was removed, so we're proposing to replace that. And it's a foreground oak, so you get more visual screen than background, like these background oaks. But it pretty effectively plugs that gap between the buildings where you can get noise and light coming from the core of campus out toward this, toward this side. We've effectively plugged that. This, for the, for the camp, well, that's the new athletic center, and this is Creative Arts and Design Center.
Well, I guess I would comment that the windows on the second floor, you know, generally in residential construction, you don't try not, you try not to put your windows so that they look over the neighbors, and I think that's one of the things that annoys them.
But what we do is, if there is a view from the second floor through windows, we put in obscure lights, because you can't see through. And we don't make those windows public, so we can't open them and look through and see neighbors in their pools. And the other thing we have is blackout shades that, in the evening, the blackout shades come down, and so when the editorial crew is working in there, goes in, you turn on a light at 10:00 at night, it doesn't shine into the neighbor's backyard. In the meeting, we have with Ed and Fran, and I asked them, how's that working? And they said it works just fine, for this, for their experience with this. So they've had a couple of years' experience with this, and from what they said, these windows are not bothering them at all. So they expressed no concern about these windows, based on, I think, their experience with these windows. We pay a lot of attention to that. It's, well, it's in our design criteria that we have in the updates of the master plan, and the master plan every year, that we don't want to be able to see into their back doors. We want to ensure their privacy in the back door.
Any further questions? I mean, thank you, David. Anyone else, any other answers?
Can I say something before? So I've been sitting here thinking about Commissioner Lane's point. I think it may make sense for us to withdraw this part of the application if we can separate it. We'd love to have you consider the addition to Stent Hall, the offices. But it may make sense for us to continue this until next month and give us some more time to work with Ed and Fran when they come back from their trip and address some other concerns. I don't, I don't know that that sets us back in terms of our timing and our timeline. If there are significant concerns that we should know about other than the ones that were raised in the letter, which, you know, like you, I saw that tonight. If there are significant concerns other than that, we'd love to know about them so we can spend the month also addressing those. But if there, if it really comes down to the matters that are contained in the letter, seems to be in the best interest of everybody to continue this until next month, and David and Jeff and others can work with the neighbors, and I think that makes a lot of sense. So, you know, we want to, we want to work well with our neighbors, and we don't want to be known in a way that he characterizes. That's, that really gave me pause, though. If that's how we're known in the community, that's, that's a problem for all, for all kinds of reasons. So I'm really disappointed to hear that that's how we're seen. And so if this helps in that direction, we're, we're happy to continue it. If, what we don't want to do is continue the building on the side of Stent, because we've actually got some, some timing issues there, and we're hoping that that can be considered tonight. If it can be considered separately, we're happy to withdraw that part. If it can't, then I guess we need to leave it in, because we need the offices to be considered. Is that it?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lane. Very nice. Okay. Anyone else desire to add, yes?
Well, in light of that, Matt Francois, at Rattan and Tucker, on behalf of Ed Goodstein and Francesca Eastman, and we appreciate the school's willingness to separate the two. We would be supportive of that. Our primary concerns are with the addition of the Creative Arts and Design Center building, so we don't have an objection to you acting on the Stent Hall addition separately. And if you were proposing to act on them both together, then I'll get up and make more comments. And if you were proposing to act on them both together, then I'll get up and make more comments.
Well, we'd rather not have that happen.
Does your meter stop and start?
All right, anyone else desire to be heard in this matter? If you're shocked, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back here.
We did, absolutely.
They are separate.
Lisa had already prepared it, so it could be separated nicely.
Yeah, they're separate. We have several things to do to consider. One of them is to adopt the addendum. But, there is, there's no problem with that, as we understand it. Basically, it is an addendum, and it's covered by prior actions. We can do that, and we can declare that the commission has considered the addendum, fifteen so forth, prior to making a decision on the project. So, we can do that. Now, is that just a declaration, as it, as it says?
Correct.
Or is that a motion?
It's just a declaration. The motion is...